Right. Three, seven. Oh. And. Patient. Indivisible. Civilly. Just. I'm fine.
All the law.
Fine.
Right. Uh, check out. On the agenda. One, eight. Whole bunch of numbers and letters, case number, blah, blah, blah. We've talked about this already a few times, and we have legal counsel here to speak to it this morning. Good morning, Counselor Hicks.
Good morning. Wally Hicks, Legal Counsel. A proposed nationwide settlement agreement has been reached with Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family concerning alleged misconduct related to opioids. The proposed settlement is being implemented in connection with Purdue's bankruptcy proceedings and consists of, among other things, a settlement of Purdue's claims against the Sacklers and certain other parties, and a settlement of direct claims against the Sacklers held by states, local governments, and other creditors. The settlement contemplates that the Sacklers will be paying an aggregate of $6.5 billion in 16 payments over 15 years, including $1.5 billion on the settlement's effective date, which would be next year. And that's going to translate to about $1.08 million over the course of those 16 payments in 15 years to Josephine County. So that's almost $1.1 million would be coming to Josephine County over the course of 15 years. Um, these amounts are in addition to amounts available from the Purdue estate, including payments available on the effective date, and amounts may be paid in the future. Uh, first, eligible subdivisions within each participating state decide whether to participate in the direct settlement. And second, concurrently with the solicitation of eligible subdivisions to participate in the direct settlement, votes will be solicited for approval of Purdue Pharma's bankruptcy plan. And Josephine County has an option to vote on that as a litigating subdivision, which most subdivisions are not. But early on, uh, as the opioid, uh, opioid lawsuits got started, Josephine County opted to become a litigating subdivision along with certain other Oregon counties. And so you have the option here today, um, that certain other jurisdictions just don't have. Uh, so over time, these settlements have already accumulated, uh, within Josephine County's, uh, receipt account to the amount of approximately $2.3 million. Uh, of that, $484,000, uh, is, has been spent and allocated already, leaving $1.8 million on hand, and a projected of $3.4 million still to come in. Of course, these settlements get paid out over the course of a number of years. And so there's projected income, uh, that's already been, uh, been part of these cases that, uh, that have proceeded to settlement. And this would again, uh, be about another $1 million that would come in. And so if there's questions or discussion, I welcome it at this time.
Presentation, I know this is something that's been going on for a long time. We've been talking about it on a regular basis. I think most of our questions have been answered, but I give the commissioners here an opportunity to ask many if they have Commissioner Smith.
Not, not really. I, I just, where, where were the bulk of the payments being made? What department?
Uh, that's the Community Corrections. Yes.
No, no questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any to, thank you, Counselor Hicks.
Thank you.
Right, next item on the agenda is a solid waste agency, and that was placed there by myself. And my request to the board is to be appointed to represent the county at the solid waste agency. And, uh, if you have any questions about that, I'm, I'd be happy to answer what I can, but all I'm looking for is an appointment to that board. Any questions?
Uh, no, no objection, uh, having appointed.
Okay, Commissioner, uh, Smith?
Objection.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up is item number four. This is requests and comments from the citizens. Uh, this is an opportunity for, uh, anybody here to speak for three minutes on any subject matter that they would like. Uh, I would like to show my appreciation in the past for the respect and productivity that we've had at, uh, at this time and juncture in the meetings. I would like to remind everybody, we have two copies of the meeting rules. If you're not familiar with them, I ask that you read them and become familiar with them. Again, as in the past, I look forward to, uh, a respectful and productive, uh, interaction here. Should you choose to go a different route, we will have to, um, maybe not accommodate you if you choose to be disruptive or disrespectful. So with that, who would like to speak first this morning? In the back corner there, sir?
Hi, David Dapper, Grants Pass. Um, I would like to thank the commissioners for coming up with a responsible budget and the difficult decisions you had to make. And especially Commissioner Barnett for all his hard work with the library people, the iron out a deal. I hope we can get that behind us soon. But I'd just like, this is our home where we live, and we need to not be taking shots at each other. We need to be picking each other up. We're, we're neighbors, right? Anyway, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, sir. Who else would like to speak? In the back corner here on the right? Your left?
Good morning, gentlemen. My name's Mr. Fitch. I'm a returned resident. I'm a United States federal code and civil rights activist advocate, and I need to provide public notice to all of you. The Constitution of the United States has an overarching requirement that every state must follow, and you cannot deny that. Clause one of Amendment five states, no person shall be held to answer for a capital or otherwise infamous crime unless presentment or indictment by a grand jury. An emolument violation is when you pay public officials to break the law. The Constitution has two areas that enforces this. Article one and section 10 says, no state shall create any law that shall impair our obligation of contract. Police officers, prosecutors, judges, you are all under contract. A contract to perform based on the oath or affirmation that they took to support and defend the constitutional rights of everyone. The Fourteenth Amendment is the other place that you'll find the reinforcement of this issue, and that is where it states, no state shall create or enforce any law that shall bridge the privileges or immunities of United States citizens. Unfortunately, the state of Oregon has enacted a law in its inferior constitution that permits public officials, judges, law enforcement officers, whom you all pay, to violate the Constitution of the United States of America. I'm here to notify you that if you continue to pay public officials to break the law, criminal sanctions will come from that. I'm asking you to please look at the clause one of Amendment five to confirm what I'm saying to be true and direct your public officials to act in a lawful constitutional manner consistent with the obligations that are codified in the Constitution of the United States of America. What you guys did on October, or August 25th, was a federal crime of, of Article 18 subsection 241 and 242. Violating the rights in that courthouse is a criminal offense, and I expect you to be held accountable for it. Good day.
Thank you, sir. Who would like to speak next? Right here in the center aisle.
Victor, Grants Pass. As always, I am here once again to voice my opposition to the promotion of religion and the forcing of Christian beliefs on the public by this Board of County Commissioners. Remember, you are government employees, who by the very nature of your positions are obligated to remain neutral in the promotion of religion, religion or non-religion. Religion has no place in these proceedings. This Board's actions promoting religion is a discriminatory, discriminatory action against me, for I believe there is no God, and religion is a lie at best, and highly inflammatory and divisive at worst. The MAGA, Christian National White Separatist Movement, has once more, as always, caused another needless death in the killing of Charlie Kirk. Let me be clear, he was your hero, not mine. But then this was, is exactly what the movement needed, a martyr, a symbol they can use to militarize our government, remove First Amendment and other rights, and as the flames are further fanned, we'll see more armed troops in our cities and towns, the implementation of curfews, and then declaration of martial law, followed by the seizing of weapons, all for your safety and security, of course. Just like what is currently happening and proposed to happen at the courthouse and here at the WBS. Remember, those who give up rights and freedom for safety and security will have neither. But what can we do, you might ask? We can start at the local level and remove tyrants like Black and Barnett. If you have not yet done so, sign the recall petition. The last recall effort was an easy win and a good start. But like a forest fire, you have to get all the remaining embers, or it will smolder and reignite into something even more devastating, as it has. Shameless self-enrichment with zero accountability and zero transparency. We deserve better from our government and for our money. And I also would like to raise the, uh, issue of no ADA access. The ADA doors are locked at both and inaccessible at both entrances. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Right here, yes.
Holly Morton, Josephine County. Again, thank you for your service, gentlemen. This is all getting very tiresome. You know, the same thing that's happening with the recalls is happening in many other counties. And we know that a group called Indivisible is organizing these things all across our state in order to get rid of our commissioners and bring in people from their group. And that's just wrong. It costs the citizens plenty of time, a lot of money, and I can't see that there's any real serious grievance um, at all, and particularly nothing that, that we couldn't come in and talk about and try to resolve. I know that there are people that used to run the departments in the county, and they're pretty disappointed that they're not still running the county and therefore thinking that they can run the county, including in, in addition to their departments. But the fact is, it was better for our county to cut out some of those larger expenses. We've already recovered the money that was invested to do that. I think even in July, we were already back in the black. And so we're, that's proven that it was a good move fiscally. Things have changed in our county over the many years. We don't have the timber industry, and grants and so forth from the government are, are going down. Um, and we need to have a coffer, which is, I know what you're trying to do. So people who are fiscally responsible do respect what it is that you're doing. We also, people that are socially responsible, respect the fact that you can walk into your office or call you on the phone at any time. Come in here and speak civilly, we hope. So we thank you for that. We're all becoming more and more fearful because of what happened with Charlie and other people. And that's what accounts for some of the additional security measures that are required. It's a shame, but that's the world that we live in now. You know, people have their agendas, and they're willing to go to great lengths to achieve their own agendas. And I will say this, I've been expecting this recall, because the minute you guys were elected, you two were elected, I had people coming up, putting their face this close to mine and saying, we are going to recall them, long before you ever sat in those chairs. We're going to recall those guys. So we knew it was going to happen. I'm sorry that things are going this way. I think it's an absolute shame and an embarrassment for our community. People in Jackson County constantly comment, you know, what is the problem with Josephine County? I guess I don't really have the answer, but anyway, thank you for all that you're trying to do.
Thank you. Against the back wall there, sir?
Morning, Commissioners. Jim Goodwin, resident of Josephine County since 1977. Let me start by saying it is truly, uh, I'm truly grateful that you kept these public meetings with public comment. When, uh, that, that would have been, uh, a dust-up that I don't know if, uh, when we could have recovered from that. Timing on it being just so many sensitive, sensitive things happening around the country and around the county. So thank you for keeping these, these public meetings. I want to take a little bit different tone today and talk about, um, a lot of commissioners on the back wall that I've worked for. And there's one in particular that had a philosophy. I worked with him a lot on a lot of different things. And he always used to say, in a perfect world, in a society where one person can make a difference, that's where the rubber meets the road. At the national level, what can one person do, two people do, three people do? If you disagree with what's going on in the White House or in the Congress or the Senate? Not a whole lot. But in a perfect world in a city or a county, when a problem rises up, the people from that city or county rise up to address it. We are in a crimson red county, folks. If this recall effort was led by a far-left loony group, we probably wouldn't get a thousand petitions. I can tell you this, people from the far-left, from the far-right, from the far-in-between, from all over are coming in to support this. You need to understand that issues like the library transcend political beliefs. Issues like 4H transcend all of that. This is not about politics. I will also say, it is about time that posts that say that we are receiving $1 from any organization, or that we are organized by any organization, need to stop. That needs to cease and desist. Our books are open. Our membership is what it is. We have volunteers all across this county. This was grassroots from folks that saw the dilapidation of our county over months and months and months. Questions not asked, accountability not being, no one coming forth and accepting accountability for decisions that the citizens had that they didn't necessarily agree with. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else seeing not okay? You guys got to be faster with the hands against the back wall, sir. It's all good.
Morning, Commissioners. Mark Jones, county resident. I'm here today representing Joko Citizens for Responsible Government. Back on September 6th, our membership voted unanimously to submit a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. I have some copies here for you that I'll give to her when I'm done, but I'll read it to you. From Joko Citizens for Responsible Government. Joko Citizens for Responsible Government is a nonpartisan civic organization that promotes, encourages, and advocates for good local governance and works to educate the citizenry, works to educate the citizenry and those who seek to hold public office in the principles and practices of good governance. The recommendation, we recommend that you implement, excuse me, implement a new policy by board order. Did I got a quiet button? Thank you. All right, start over. This, uh, implement a new policy by board order or resolution that requires an agenda item cover sheet for all major decisions and votes made by the Josephine County Board of County Commissioners. The policy should require the meeting packet item cover sheet to include at minimum a description of the item, a brief write-up of the background of the item, and most importantly, a fiscal impact statement. The fiscal impact statement should include the estimated costs, revenues, or other estimated fiscal impacts in the future that could result from the approval of this item. Whatever county official brings this item forward to the BCC decision should consult the county finance office if they need assistance with estimating the fiscal impact. Why is this important? Josephine County Board of County Commissioners has made several major decisions in 2025 without considering or discussing the fiscal impact of those decisions. A fiscal impact statement or cost implication statement is best practice to include on all major agenda items in front of a governing body. The governing body needs to understand the current and future impact of approving the item. Many governments use fiscal impact statements for governing body decisions, including City Grants Pass, Jackson County, and many other cities and counties. Josephine County used to do this, but this practice has been eliminated over the last year. An agenda item cover sheet fiscal impact statement should be presented on all board orders, resolutions, or ordinances acted on by the Board of County Commissioners. And that's our recommendation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Right here on the second row, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nancy Lester, Grants Pass. First, let me say that is an excellent idea that Mark had. It would make your job so much easier, because how many times have you said you, you get a packet and you don't know what it means? So I think that's a great recommendation. Okay, I want to talk about the library lease and the termination for convenience clause with a 30-day notice, uh, which seems to be the final holdup on getting the lease signed. I tried to envision what that would mean for the library. There are about 108,000 books and audiobooks in the library today. Out of curiosity, I took a box like this, which is about 1.1 cubic feet. It's a standard size you would put books in when you move. Uh, the boxes can't be too heavy, because you couldn't lift them or the box would break. So I filled this box with 15 books. The box weighed about 20 pounds. I could still lift 20 pounds. 108,000 books divided by 15 equals 7,200 boxes of books. At 1.1 cubic feet per box, that's almost 8,000 cubic feet. So picture this, 14 rooms, 12 by 12 feet, boxes piled four feet high. And that's just about what it would take to store the physical books. And of course, it would have to be temperature and humidity controlled and safe. All this would have to be labeled so you could put the books in alphabetical or numerical order again by type of book, fiction, mystery, westerns, romance, large print, children's, teens, and so on. Then you have the furniture, fixtures, supplies, carts, library of things, the IT infrastructure, computers, monitors, cables, cords, and I don't know what all else. I moved 12 times in my adult life. Each time took weeks to sort through it, pack, unpack, sort out, and get some semblance of orders. I can't imagine doing this with 108,000 books and all the other items within 30 days. And that's what your termination for convenience clause with 30-day notice would require. There are 24,000 active library cards in this community. That's 27% of the county population. Chris and Ron, you each receive less than 24,000 votes. That's 26% of the county population. All three of you say you represent all of the county residents, not just those who voted for you. So please be true to that statement and complete the good faith negotiation of the library lease without this unreasonable 30-day termination clause for your convenience.
Thank you. Anyone else? Right here, third row.
Good morning. Matt Spurlock, Grants Pass. Uh, wanted to start saying, Commissioner Smith, thank you very much. Uh, want to give you some kudos for releasing the John West emails. Um, I have donated another dollar to the library in your honor for doing the right thing, and I'll continue to do so. So please make me run out of money. Uh, Commissioners Black and Barnett, uh, earlier this week, you released a document called Exposing and Opposing the Joko Commissioner Recall Attempt. In this document, you accuse both Rogan to visible and indivisible national of supporting and pushing your recall. Uh, also being bad actors with a destructive agenda and assisting in the recall of officials elsewhere in Oregon. Let's be perfectly clear. As the Chair of Rogan to visible, I can say that we have nothing to do with this recall. I've reached out to the national group to see if they will make a statement as well. My personal involvement in the recall is to set up tables and chairs at the post office two to three days a week. I'm also the leader of a local rock band. That doesn't mean that my band is somehow leading the recall against you either. Uh, the so-called white paper you have written is really not a serious document. It's a smear piece. It lazily blames indivisible for a recall movement that is mostly Republican-led and entirely homegrown here in Josephine County. This is an attempt to discredit local residents by painting them as pawns of some shadowy national agenda. It's dishonest, and it insults the intelligence of every voter in this county. Your willingness to spread this information is extremely concerning. Why should the citizens of Josephine County trust you with millions of dollars if you can't be trusted with basic facts? Uh, Mr. Black, you were asked a question about, uh, Mr. Sellers' compensation on a radio interview this week. Um, I didn't really hear a clear answer, so I would like to ask you formally, is he still the head of HR, IT, emergency management, and finance? If so, have those departments been combined? Is he receiving a salary from multiple departments? And what is his current compensation package? I'd also like to request clarity on, um, and transparency regarding parcel 35-06-22D-200, which was recently split into 80 sublots near the airport. Uh, this plot has already been approved and recorded, yet the public has never been informed what this project actually is. If these sublots are for hangar development or leases, the county has created dozens of new revenue-producing units without public notice, hearings, or fair bidding. That raises serious questions about who approved it, why it was not presented openly, and who stands to benefit. I'm formally asking the board to disclose the approval process, release the reports and authorizations, and confirm whether these lots are intended for hangar use, and if so, when the public will have the chance to comment or bid. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Right here by the aisle?
Good morning, Commissioners. Kathleen Crone, uh, Grants Pass City. Thank you for all that you're doing. I really appreciate your, um, attention to fiscal stability and, uh, looking ahead to the future for, you know, how, um, the federal funding's going to affect our community. And, um, I just wanted to say a little bit about, uh, Citizens for Responsible Government and Indivisible, um, our related organizations. And I just, um, kind of appalled at this last speech that was made. This man, uh, was helping at a, uh, community outreach in the parks recently and, um, was asked, are you part of indivisible? And he blatantly said no, even though he was wearing a shirt that said indivisible. Now, if somebody can lie that blatantly, what was he lying about up here at this podium? So, you know, it's been, become very divisive across the nation, and I don't know how we're going to sort this out, but I just want to say I'm in favor of all that you're doing. I am against this recall, and, um, I'm sorry that a lot of these people are playing on vulnerable, uninformed citizens, because we are a red county and a conservative county, and I hope- and I hope it stays that way.
Thank you. Anyone else? Against the back wall there?
Good morning. My name's Chris Kirby. I'm live in the county of Josephine, uh, Josephine County. We moved here a year ago today from Santa Cruz, very blue county. I had never heard of recalling elected officials before. They'd never do that in Santa Cruz. It wasn't even mentioned, and there was plenty of strife over what decisions were being made. When people get elected, you buck it up and deal with it for the time they're in and give you a chance to do what you need to do. Expecting you to do things within six, seven, eight months is ridiculous. It's, it's, I'm sure government's a slow-moving thing, and you get it done eventually. I'm disgusted with what I see with this recall group. They lie. They're, they're not being honest about what the truth really is. I think you guys are all doing a great job, and I appreciate you doing it. We have to give you your chance. You're in for four years. Do what you need to do. Same thing with city council. I know they're talking about that next, and that makes me sick. So thank you, guys, for doing what you do. I appreciate you all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, before I bring it back to the Board, I have an email of someone that was not able to be with us here this morning and asked that I read it out loud. And so this is what I will do. It is from a Mr. J. Meredith, and it says, Dear Commissioners, I want to thank you for being generous with your time yesterday as we discussed the long overdue decision on the May 2023 mining lease application for American Mineral Research. As no motion was made, you still have two weeks to do the right thing by September the 30th. In our view, if you don't do the right thing, you'll be choosing millions of expenses over millions of dollars of revenue for county law enforcement programs. Just like we have, just like we have in recent months, we will aggressively pursue our legal rights on this property. And as you know, our attorneys sent each of you a letter earlier this year saying we have over $20 million in damages if our lease application is not approved. I was reminded by Curtis Hayden of the sneak preview earlier this year that just about every commissioner that has campaigned for office for many years has said we need to do more with the timber and mineral resources in Josephine County. But then nothing ever happens on those fronts. I'll be meeting with Congressman Bentz about this topic again soon, but it's going to be harder to advocate for our mineral resources if our local county commissioners are not even interested in developing resources the county owns. I talked to each of you about this project before you were Commissioners. Commissioner Black, you know the situation very well as we discussed this project many times over the years. You are also Chair of the County Mining Advisory Committee, and you know many of the details and know that the MAC unanimously approved all our applications. Commissioner Smith, we've talked about this before, but at the end of the recent WBS, you made a call to the public about finding additional ways the county can earn revenues. You are a strong advocate for timber and mining. Please explain why you didn't make the motion on our application. This is an opportunity for the county to earn 8 million to 10 million in revenues from this single 76-acre property. What is stopping you from approving something that you have advocated for so many times in the past? Commissioner Barnett, we discussed this project in the summer of 2024 when you were campaigning for office. I have a voice message from you in July 2024 saying that you checked with the Commissioners, and our mining lease application is "in the legal office," that's in quotes, "waiting action." You know for a fact the county is at fault for not taking action on this application in a timely manner. Commissioners, the county is in an unfortunate position here. It's not the fault of current Commissioners, but you have the opportunity to make it right. Please do the right thing by September the 30th. Thanks, J. Meredith. All right, with that, I'll bring it back to the Board and give an opportunity to the Commissioners to respond. Commissioner Smith?
I don't really have anything to respond, other than I appreciate you being here. Think it's great that you're involved in your county government, and it's unfortunate we can't please everybody all the time. I wish I could, but it's just not possible. I'm going to do what I think is best for the majority of the people in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Barnett?
Yeah, just a few things. Thank you to the Sheriff's Office for being here. Thank you for security, and we're doing that for the security and safety of all individuals, not just us, not about us, about you as well attending these meetings. A lot of constituents were concerned about their own safety just around, out and about. So thank you, security. Thank you, law enforcement, for being here. I appreciate you keeping the decorum, and it has been much better today, so thank you. Victor, uh, you know, I'm so sorry. I know it's like a broken record about the religion thing, and only advice I can give you, Victor, is if you just come in five minutes late, five minutes late, but you're going to continue doing the same rhetoric. It's okay. It's just a broken record. I'm just saying, if you don't like the religion or education or pledge of allegiance, you can just come in five minutes late. That's it. But, uh, I, I know you don't understand that, but that's okay. Holly, thank you so much for unity in the community and appreciate the positivity, Holly. We need more of that than the negative. It's positive, uh, over negativity. I like that. So thank you, Holly. David Depper, uh, I know that you love this community so much. So thank you for what you stand for. Thank you for acknowledging our accomplishments that we have done in record time in the first six months of our leadership. We told people that if you elect us in, we're going to get things done, and we're doing it. And we have a whole entire list of accomplishments that people seem to forget. We did balance a budget without laying off one person and provided law enforcement. We upped their budget to provide safety and law enforcement for this community, which was way overdue. So David, I know that's important to you, and we did that, so thank you. Let's see. Public meetings are open. There was some talk about that these meetings weren't going to happen. Our job as Commissioners and, and, and we're responsible for all these other departments. Safety is paramount. I've been in that background field. I know what it's like, and some people take it like it's just no big deal. Well, when you have an event that happened like last week, everybody has to step up their game plan. We're going to be proactive, not reactive, and wait for something to happen and wish that we did do something. So I just want to reiterate that. Yeah, the Courier did a big headline thinking that we were going to shut the meetings down and all this stuff, and that wasn't, that wasn't true. What was true is that we were having discussions about how to do this the right way. And yes, we talked about different methods, and those are still being adjusted. We are improving our security plan all the way around, and that's for the employees of the county and for your safety as well. Kathleen Crone, uh, thank you. I, you're also a city counselor. I appreciate the work that you're doing on the council and support your work, so thank you, uh, for doing that and your demeanor and, and just, you're very concerned. I see you at events. You don't always talk, but when you do at these meetings, uh, I really appreciate the positivity, and I think all of us appreciate that because this is what this community is all about. This community, if you've lived here as long as I have, for most of my entire life, you appreciate the community that you live in, and that's why we're serving up here on the Board as well. We love our community, so thank you. I know you have a passion for Grants Pass, too, so thank you very much, Kathleen, for that. Chris Kirby, uh, congrats on your one-year anniversary. So, uh, apparently you left for a reason. You left where you came, and you came up here. This community is great. It could be much better, and it's changed over the years. And I can tell you, we're just going to keep fighting to make the change better with unity in the community and, and positivity over negativity. That focus is one of my pet peeves, and, and we're going to continue to do that, no matter if you're against us or not. So we're going to keep, continue with those strides. We want to make this place a great place for you. So thank you for getting involved in the meetings and voicing your opinions in government and everybody else, and, uh, we appreciate all the support. We really, really do, so thank you. Uh, we're going to continue to do good for you, and that's all I have, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. First of all, I would like to put a big thank you out to everybody for being polite and respectful at the meeting this morning. It is one of my responsibilities, as the Chair has outlined in the Charter, to run these meetings, and I'm very, very appreciative of your respectfulness and your willingness to share your concerns with us in a positive and respectful manner. Next, Mr. Fitch, um, I know you called my office a couple of days ago, I believe three days ago. I've called you, I have tried to call you back no less than six times. You don't answer your phone. You don't have any way to leave a message. I'm more than happy to talk to you about your concerns. So six times, at least six times. The next item I'd like to speak to is the open meetings was brought up. Sir, would you please, uh, keep it quiet? Thank you very much. The open meetings, uh, I know it was reported as, as was stated by Commissioner Barnett on the front page of the newspaper that we were not going to have open meetings. Folks, open meetings are very important. We need those. We need to have a dialogue. We need to have a discussion. But remember, it's not the only way. It is one way, but it is not the only way that you can reach out to the Commissioners to, uh, to talk to us about your concerns. We do have an open door policy. Give us a call, make an appointment. We're very approachable. There's a, a concern about the termination clause in the lease with the library. I just want to remind everybody, the termination clause has been in the library lease for a long, 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 long time. Okay, this is nothing new. It's been there for a long time, and I'll say it again, a long time, decades. The next item is there were some questions about properties being developed at the airport. I believe it's Mr. Spurlock was asking about those. I have no idea what you're talking about, other than I think you may be referring to the Paradise Ranch development that was, um, of, of, um, of significant relevance, I believe, about 20 years ago. But I don't know, but I'd be happy to talk to you about it some more. If you have any questions, uh, reach out to me, and I'll be happy to talk to you about it. All right, that's all I have. I appreciate, oh, I appreciate all the people that come here to these meetings with a positive attitude. Not only that are positive towards what we are doing, but positive towards what they would like to see. Okay? So we thank you for that. All right, we'll go back to the agenda right now, and at this time, um, I would enter, I would welcome a motion to opt into the proposed settlement with Purdue Pharma and the, and to the, and to approve the proposed Purdue bankruptcy plan.
I'll make that motion to enter into that agreement.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carry, three to zero.
Thank you. Next up, I would entertain a motion to appoint Commissioner Black and myself as a representative to the Josephine County Solid Waste Agency.
I make a motion as stated.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carry, three to zero.
Thank you. And, uh, so point out that the Board has reviewed and approved all pending administrative and personnel actions before the Board without objection. Commissioner, uh, Smith, without objection?
Objection.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnett, without objection?
Without objection.
Thank you, and I declare also without objection. Next up, we have the consent calendar. This is the minutes, which are available for review at the county's, uh, Board of Commissioners' office. The administrative workshop dated September the 2nd, the weekly business session dated September the 4th, and the administrative workshop dated September the 9th, and the Board Journal for the month of August 2025. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
None.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carry, three to zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is other matters. This is where Commissioners may bring up other matters for consideration by the entire Board. Commissioner Smith?
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnett?
Uh, just an update, uh, on the double slide. We did get the application signed back from the, uh, group that's going to take the lead on that, U-Turn for Christ. So we got that paperwork back. It's been submitted back to the railroad to try to do that humidity cleanup. It's going to be a unified effort, and, uh, it's a collaboration with the city. It's a collaboration with the county. It's a collaboration with Goodwill People, Park Watch as well, U-Turn for Christ, and just a bunch of citizens that just want to clean up their area. So that's unity, in my opinion. So I just want to give you an update, Commissioners, that that application with all the requirements the railroad wanted has been submitted, and I want to give you an update on that.
Okay, thank you. Under other, I would like to bring up the library lease. This is something that we've been working on. Our legal counsel has been working with the libraries team, and I believe we have some drafts that are before us. I have not have a chance to review that completely, but, uh, I would say that look to next week to having that put on an agenda for our admin workshop for discussion. All right. Moving on to the, uh, agenda would be announcements. Commissioner Smith, you have any announcements to share with?
Well, I, I think that the federal agencies and, and ODF have done a great job with our fires this year. We've escaped pretty much fire season without a major fire in Josephine County, which is always a big plus. So I would just kudos because I see a real effort that I hadn't seen before from the federal agencies, especially the Forest Service, to jump right on those fires and get them put out while they're still small. So I think that's a big plus for our county, and I want to thank those federal agencies for their work.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnett?
Yes, Moon Complex Fire and the other one, uh, those have been, uh, done. They're pretty much done, as you can see, the air is a lot clearer, so they've downgraded that, those fires. So we're going in a cooler season now, so, uh, thank you to our emergency management team, uh, been informing us, and also ODF, Oregon Department of Forestry. They've been, uh, tremendous on giving us, uh, updates on a daily basis. I just got another one right now. So, um, uh, thank you for firefighters out there. I just want to thank the community, the churches, the cruises, the vigils for the assassination of Charlie Kirk. Let's put this way, I didn't know the guy at all, but seeing somebody get assassinated for just having dialogue was just uncalled for, and it was a wake-up call for the whole nation and our community. I have not seen anything like that in our community ever over the weekend, what I saw. People from Medford drove down, thousand cars gathered around and motorcycles, and drove through Grants Pass all the way to Applegate back to Medford. They're going to do another one. It's just showing unity. It's showing that everybody is patriotic and with the United States of America. I just want to say it warmed my heart to see that come through town. Didn't even know it was happening till the last minute, but I just want to thank everybody that was involved in that. That was just amazing. Violence and hate is not welcomed against anyone, even us. Nobody deserves to be hated on. Nobody deserves violence. Nobody deserves to be belittled to the point where they can't even do their job. And I, let that be a message when you see these meetings more and more and, and see the same rhetoric that happens. It's just uncalled for. I was taught by my dad, if you can't say something nice, just don't say it. Zip it. Just don't say it. So hopefully, we can work on that as a community and, and go with the agenda of unity in the community. I like that. Also, uh, been with the Air Force a long time. Happy birthday, Air Force. It's 78 years old today. Wore my shirt as well, so just want to say happy birthday to the United States Air Force. And then lastly, I just want to say thank you for all the support for our Commissioners up here. These Commissioners raise their hand to serve. It's not easy to serve, and if we gave you the keys to what you think is easy up here, I welcome you to do that. I welcome you to run on the next election. I really, really do, because people think it's just so easy to come over here and have a magic wand and get things done overnight. We've been running since day one. It's exhausting. If you would come and see the rap sheet of all the things that we do, I'm really proud of my colleagues up here. I just want to tell you, I'm very proud to work with them. We're trying to do the best thing for the county. We are working hard, and we want to go down in history showing that we did something. And that's what most people, when they do public service, do. They walk away and go, did I make an impact? Did I do something? Or was I the butt of all jokes just because they hated you for doing good? Just think about that. The people that say negative stuff all the time, all the time, it gets old, and nobody wants to hear that. Everybody wants to hear the good things that we're doing. I have more positive than negative to, to give to you every single week at these meetings, and that's part of the announcement part, to show the good stuff that's going on in the community, because these meetings can be pretty boring. But I have to tell you, it's a community effort. There's a lot of people I know that didn't vote for me, and that's fine. I talked to you. I go into uncomfortable cir, uh, situations. I, I, I don't know what else to tell you, other than we just need to come together and, and be open-minded. We're all on the same team, guys.[1779.21] We're all on the same team, guys. We are. We love our area. We love our city. We love our county. We love the United States of America. I sure do. I die for that flag. A lot of people don't understand what that means. So anyway, I just want to, in closing, just say thank you for all the support. We're going to keep on moving forward, not backwards, and positive as we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. A couple of items that I wanted to expand on, I think maybe you were looking at my notes here. Kelsey Peak Fire, ODF reports that it's 95% contained, 1,000 acres. Good job, guys, on and gals for getting that fire under control. The Moon Complex is, however, only at 10% contained. There are 970 people, I'll say that again, 970 people working on that Moon Complex. It's burned up 4,000 acres, but it looks like the weather is getting better and better,